All right, so we're gonna start the meeting with the approval of the minutes. Joe just got us the minutes. Send them to Barbara, so I want to give tomorrow time. Did you send it to tomorrow?
I will send them to her.
Okay, and then I got them, and then so give us at the next meeting to approve them. Okay, we'll do that. Um, okay. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is public speak time. Anybody have anything for public speak? Okay. Um, all right, and now we're moving on to the consideration of the following mayoral appointment. Um, Chet's not here yet. He did assure me that he would be here if I did not hear from him. Uh, he did have some family stuff pending, but um, he said if I didn't hear from him, he would be here. So, and I have not, so. Uh, we are going to move on to uh, Gary Golis and Dave Gardner. We'll move on to um, to those two appointments. So, um, I see Mr. Gardner's here, so that's good. Um, Gary, Gary is a reappointment to National Pond Committee, so um, I would entertain a motion for Gary to the Pond Committee.
Okay, I'll move that with move Gary Golis National Pond Committee or recommend appointment. Term expiring 12/31/16.
Okay, uh, second? I'll second that. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, you know what? Before I do that, though, I think maybe we have to do our reorganization.
That makes sense.
We've gone down that and we moved on that, but then that's okay. But why don't we do the reorganization piece now?
Okay.
So, um, as the present past chair, um, nominations for the Chair of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Well, I'm nominate Joey for Chair.
It's the way it is. She's a leader.
Do we have a second?
I have a second there.
Yeah, okay, we have a, we have a motion, yeah. Smooth as glass.
The motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, and now we need to nominate a person to record the minutes.
I'll nominate me.
Oh!
Since no one else.
You're so kind. I'll second that nomination.
It's not an easy task to do.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, so, all right, so we will continue on. Oops, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes, you are.
Can you mute you? Okay.
Just reminded me. Sorry, you're just so busy, you know?
I am. I've been up since 4:30, and I'm gonna probably be up at 4:30 tomorrow morning, too, so whatever. Okay, so um, I guess we'll move on to the next appointment. David, David Gardner to Development and Industrial Committee. Thank you, David, for coming. Would you like to talk to us about why you would like to serve on this very wonderful, creative appointment?
I have previously served on the Zone Board of Appeals. I did that for eight and a half years. Um, most recently, I served on the Planning Board. I took that appointment, um, because there were vacancies on that board that threatened, for instance, its uh, its ability to actually hold any hearings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I intentionally asked to be appointed to that board for the duration of a seat that was left vacant, and that was for a year. So when I, that term was fulfilled, I did not seek reappointment to that. So I've taken off about a year, and um, notice that the, in the meantime, I am on the Board Directors for Community Access Television, so one of my pursuits has been to uh, film meetings to make them more available to people. Um, and so because the EDIC had chosen not to do their meetings voluntarily, I ended up in the room with filming there myself, so that put me more in touch with what the board actually, what they're missioned with, what they're doing, and also the fact that there have, there's perpetual vacancy on that committee. As far back as I can remember, there have been four or five vacant seats. Um, the uh, Jamie, who is the Assistant City Planner, has set out a lot of goals for the EDIC, and I have been watching him try to implement those, uh, and, and those are things that I really embrace, the, the goals of that, and working more closely, of course, with Local Works Committee, uh, that, which is a subcommittee of the EDIC. So, I just thought that since I have some time available, and I'm not currently serving in the City Board, that this would be something to throw my hat into the ring for, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, David, so how, how, how would you say your relationship was with the EDIC as you film them? Was it a, was it okay, or was it?
Well, the first time I, the first time, this before, uh, I, I think the first time I stepped into the room with a camera, uh, I was met with some resistance, um, and, but it was realized by some of the members that I had an absolute right to be there. Um, and, and I feel that since the EDIC meets at 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon during, in weekday, when most reasonable, most people, well, not members of the public can't be there, that um, I think that's why we have, you know, open meeting law in, a few years ago, adopted the rules concerning filming meetings, because it is helpful, it's uh, to, to some people. Um, I, I was, met with some resistance, but uh, I didn't see that that was any cause to not do what I was doing.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, so your interest in the committee, what would you like to see, what would you like to see? Actually, you said you'd like to help implement some of the points that Jamie has brought up to be part of that implementation, to be involved with it.
Yeah, specifically, there are projects that I think are worth doing, and the city, East Hampton, has spoken about doing these things for years now, um, which is cataloging availability of storefronts and properties for, uh, to be on the ready when, um, say, a developer or a business interest from outside the community contacts East Hampton and says, "What's available?" You know, uh, breaking it down, uh, in, in terms of, uh, what square foot space, lease space, what are the sizes, what fits their business. Uh, this has been, it's going back several years, has always been, it seems it comes up in conversation as a project that needs to be done, but uh, has never been implemented quite yet, and I see Jamie really working with the EDIC to make that happen.
And so, I guess one last question for you. I see that the term is two years. You'd expect to be able to finish that term unless something comes up. I mean, you're signing up for, for those two years in your mind, anyway, unless?
It's up to 2016, doesn't it?
Right.
Yeah, so 14, 15, 16.
December 31st, yeah. Two years.
That is 15, 16, that's three years.
Three years.
Yeah. Okay, that's right, three years.
Three, it's okay.
Exactly, no, I was, that's why I was taken aback. I'm thinking, you know, yeah.
Well, see, now he's a year ahead of you, so I don't think he's gonna have a problem.
Well, I was gonna say. We'll only do two, I mean, we'll do three, I see you.
Um, no, that threw me initially, too, and I, you know, 'cause, no, but, right, exactly, yes. Um, I, I have nothing that would interfere with that.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions? No? Okay. Um, yeah, oh, yes?
Can I public speak?
I gave you the opportunity. No, I'm teasing you. Yes, you can.
That's, that's public speak for non-agenda.
Yes, you may. Absolutely.
Uh, well, I'm here, um, David Boyle, uh, to speak in opposition to this appointment. Um, Mike is a current member of the, well, he's a current member of the EDIC, and I'll let him speak for himself. I was a 16-year member of the EDIC, and um, and a few of us have left, created some vacancies, a few of us have wanted to get back on, but after this appointment came up, um, decided not to. Um, the applicant in the past has shown an anti-business and divisive behavior, and I don't think the EDIC needs that. Um, some of the things he said might sound good. We, we've done inventories in the past of, um, storefronts, industrial, and they have been planted, or not, it's been because of the mayor's office or funding, no, no conspiracy. Um, Jamie and Jessica want to put more on to volunteers, and some of this work actually is Jamie's work. Um, and the EDIC, its heyday, its prime, its peak, was with the vision process, starting with RKG in 1997, then the first vision process, then the five-year revision. Um, it kind of morphed into a, I don't know, cleanup day committee, which is more, less than it should be. Um, but, you know, I'm here, I've been, I've been burned in the past by applicant, um, but I've had many people this past week ask me to come speak. I, I thought it was best I just stay away, but too many people have said, you know, someone, something needs to be said. And, you know, I know that the City Council and the mayor, especially now, we have a great opportunity with a new mayor, obviously strive for cooperation in always possible, small, big, um, trivial, insignificant, but I don't think that the City Council should continually rubber stamp something just because there's an opening. Um, the history's in the, the history's there. The signed committee debacle, a great part of it relies on David's shoulders, and um, I really think that you guys should reconsider, or if you could. Um, I understand it's a difficult decision, and no one likes to say no to someone when they, when they ask to volunteer. I understand 100%, but um, you know, a lot of us in the committee, community, give, 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 and sometimes we're not appreciated, and, and a lot of people who like to be divisive seem to get more credit, more um, credibility, and it's unfortunate. So I'm just here to ask you to, uh, to not recommend this decision, and I, lastly, I just thank you for your time.
Okay.
Yeah, my name's Mike Burley, and I'm in opposition to this nomination as well. Um, I think it's well-known, in the past, that he has left committees that he was on because he decided he didn't want to be on there anymore. I have spoken to one committee, the Channel 5 people, say he's very decisive, divisive. Um, that's just me saying that, and if they want to make that point, they have to come here by themselves, but they have not. Um, the first day that David walked in there with the camera, we asked him not to because that committee had decided to vote against him live until City Council had made the decision which way they wanted to go with this, and there were members on the committee who voted not to film. And David pretty much decided that it wasn't, didn't matter what that committee wanted, he was gonna do what he wanted anyway. Uh, EDIC is supposed to support the industry and the business people in East Hampton. That's what I've always believed. As most of you know, I've been on committees for a very long time. I love East Hampton, that's the reason why I moved here with my family way back in 1979. Uh, I believe in getting on a group, stay with the group, finish the job, not leave it early, not decide to go somewhere else because you don't like what's going on, or to pick a spot where you think you want to push something, not necessarily in the best interest of East Hampton. And we want to support the business community in East Hampton, we've always done that at EDIC, and we'd like to continue to do that, and I just think David's just too decisive, divisive, in the whole process, so I would recommend that you not approve this appointment. And I also thank you for your time.
Okay. Do you have anything to say? I'm sorry, David, let me.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, uh, David was on the planning board.
Your name is, I'm sorry.
Harry Shaw.
Okay.
On the planning board, the CPA in the Historic Commission. And David was on the planning board with me for about a year and a half, and as far as the planning board, I can't fight about EDIC, I know nothing about it, but as far as the planning board's concerned, he served well, he kept every meeting, was totally open-minded, uh, if there was something that we didn't, we couldn't see because of our expertise or whatever, uh, David always had that, that niche for finding what was the little thing that was wrong, always thought of as something he'd fall for the seat for some reason because of, uh, our lack of knowledge, and uh, as far as the planning board's concerned, I thought he did a good job.
Was he a team player on the planning board, and did, did you find him to be divisive?
Yeah, I mean, we had our meeting, and certain people dominate the conversation, shall we say, but uh, as far as anything's done, and as far as coming to the point and writing questions that normally would probably wouldn't be raised, I think he was, uh, okay.
Okay.
But I say nothing goes with the EDIC. I mean, I don't know what thing I'm, what you're talking about as far as that's concerned.
I'm sorry, David.
I just had one comment about David's appointment.
Okay, well, let me, can I let David's?
Oh, absolutely. I just wanted to rebut some things that Michael said, uh, and that is, uh, the first point being, I've left committees, I would like to know what those are, and also that he said, he spoke to the Community Access Board. I would like to know who he spoke to. To my knowledge, he spoke to the employee of the board, and that employee, uh, gave me a different story entirely about their interaction. So, I just really want to, you know, kind of clarify what it is, what committees have I left because, uh, things weren't going my way, what are those, and in writing those, naming those, you haven't noted that, I didn't think you could.
Well, his EBA is one classic one, that's documented.
Uh, I served eight and a half years on his EBA.
No term, runs a half a year.
I served eight and a half years on his EBA.
When you left, it was divisive.
Three people.
Okay, 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 okay.
Three people resigned at the same time.
We're not getting into this, we're not doing this.
We're not getting into that.
Okay, all right.
We're also.
Stop.
But, Michael, to clarify.
No, 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 all right. Take them at us, and then we'll, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael said that he spoke to board members of Community Access Television. Um, I believe that that did not occur, so I just want to know when that occurred and who he spoke to, because uh, that would be logistically almost impossible to occur. I believe he did speak to Kathy Lynch, who is an employee of Community Access Television, not on the Board of Directors, and therefore is not part of the Board of ECAT, so as far as getting feedback from an employee of an organization as opposed to speaking to board members who have to meet and decide, make decisions concerning the operation of the organization, I think that's all critically very different.
Okay. Let me just, let me just say that Michael did say, at the end of his sentence, that he couldn't speak for Community Access, so he, if somebody wasn't here to speak about it, that he was not going to make an issue of that, so I, I feel, myself, and I probably, I, you, the rest of you can speak for yourselves here, that, that, that doesn't mean anything to me. It doesn't hold any weight one way or the other.
Okay.
Unless someone is here, my own personal opinion, unless someone is here to speak about their own experiences with you, that's the only thing that really holds weight with me, not what he said, she said, or what they said. Okay?
Is, uh, all I can say is, I'm not here to defend Mr. Gardner. I sent him to be here for somebody else who didn't show up yet.
Oh, okay.
That was just, those are the remarks I made off the top of my head.
And we appreciate it, thank you. We appreciate it, because you're saying it as your own personal experience, and I appreciate that, thank you. Michael?
Is David on the Board of the Channel 5?
I am.
The person I spoke to was on the board, is the, is the high school teacher that's on the board of Channel 5.
Well, you know, and if the high school teacher on the board, whatever wants to come and speak.
Well, he spoke to me personally, is why I even thought to come down here, because he said he was overbearing, and he couldn't get an order in Edgewide's when he was on the board, so.
Well, he's no longer on the board.
Okay, well, it's, it's, it's irrelevant, because, you know, if they're not here, it's irrelevant. That's how I look at it.
I just had one quick comment for the board, and it's something what Mr. Boyle said, because I was the council at the time when Council Schartoff was doing the sign, the sign ordinance, and uh, that process, I wouldn't say, both sides that had difference of opinion were equally, um, I mean, it was, they were charged meeting, and I just wanted to say it was, uh, charged on both sides, since, again, I was just there, I, because I attended a lot of meetings at the City Council, and I was at a lot of those meetings, and it was charged on both sides.
Yes, it was very passionate. Yes, those, all of, all of those meetings were very passionate, yes. The signed committees were very passionate. Joe?
Oh, yeah.
He's looking for scars.
Yeah, you know, actually, I am, and I think what I might suggest, and I'm sure both parties will hate it, which maybe that's a good idea of a compromise then, is I would like to make, I think it would be a good idea to appoint Mr. Gardner with a one-year term, and then we can reassess if this is a problem or not, right? Because I, it is important to me that when we have a cohesive working group, and I, I appreciate David's willing to come up here and volunteer for the city, um, but there, usually we don't have people who are talking against people, so I think there'd be some caution, but, um, so I would certainly be willing to, for your appointment, and then we can reassess it.
Because you said both sides might not like it, but I, I'm finding it very reasonable.
Me, too.
Okay, well, I love when we come to compromise. That's such a wonderful thing.
It's 2014, isn't it?
Yeah, don't do mine.
It's gotta be better than 2013, so we'll make it better.
Okay, so, the motion is, Joe, would you like to do that?
I'll do the math. Um, I'll make a motion to point Dave Gardner Development Industrial Committee, return ending 12/31/17. Is that correct?
No, added to it.
You added.
I was saying 60, I was adding.
14, something.
15. I like your math.
I know. I'm not on fighting this here.
I should be 14.
14.
14.
14.
Okay, 14, there we go.
Okay, that's what I had written down, but that's okay. Joe and I both.
School kids, right?
Yeah.
Who? No, he's a vet, and I'm a transportation director.
You got a professor sitting over there.
We have a professor on the other end, so I'm saying, oh.
Their eyes are rolling.
Okay, so motion's made, we need a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Three to, oh, three to zero, yes, in favor of the appointment from now until December 31st, 2014. Excellent, equitable, thank you. Thank you, thank you for all of your input, thank you for coming here on this really, really nasty night.
Yeah, it's a little thick out there.
Yeah, it's hitting there, so.
We have like eight minutes to get through.
Yes, all right, so, Chet, thank you for coming.
I slipped and slid in. I had to wait for a standard on West Street at Kirk.
Yes.
There was a car that spun out there, so we were a little backed up.
Oh, yeah.
So, it wasn't.
Yes, and uh, seems my whole day has been slipping and sliding.
Sounds like my stocks.
Let's hope we can put it to the staff and you can have a smooth ride.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, but whatever. But thank you for the warm sentiments. All right, um, Chet, um, we did hold over your appointment, um, which went in front of us last week, um, on the request of Council Hagan, and uh, again, the same rules will apply, um, I, I will give you some latitude as to why you asked Chet to be here, but we're not gonna get into any, yeah, exactly. So, thank you.
Let me just, because I don't, for a time, I'll kind of phrase this as.
And this is a reappointment, so, yeah.
What, what I thought is, the planning board's appointments are very important, okay? And um, this is, most of what you know, I was opposed to Stop &amp; Shop, and I'm not here to debate the, whether that was a good decision or bad, because what I'm here to do is talk about the process.
Okay. And we, and we have some people here that were very involved in the process, no, we have other, yes, exactly, thank you.
And um, now that the CERNAC suit's over, you know, we can kind of talk about it, because a lot of this stuff, I've, I've gone through documents from the courts and all that, and when, when it comes to Mr. Sedlecki, is, uh, what I wanted to bring forward is, is important to me, is that, um, we go forward with an open process in the future of planning board decisions, and I know one of the big parts of the CERNAC suit was around ex parte meetings, where people were one-sided meetings, and um, in no way do I think that, um, Mr. Sedlecki orchestrated or initiated these meetings, but there were meetings between an attorney from Stop &amp; Shop and planning board members. One chairman ref, uh, did meet with him, an acting chair, two absolutely refused to meet with a lawyer, and two did meet with him, one of being Mr. Sedlecki, and I guess, um, it, this, I believe took place in town hall, maybe on a Friday, and I was just asking Mr. Sedlecki of who, how it was arranged, who set it up, and then going forward, I know even in there, in the court, and I'm going by stuff filed by CERNAC's attorney, even Mr. Sedlecki don't think, said he felt it was very unusual that they would meet outside the process.
Okay.
So I guess my concern is if, how Mr. Sedlecki, and again, I'm trying to wrap this up, how Mr. Sedlecki feels that process, if that, he felt he was right in that process, and if going forward on the planning board, he would, um, make sure everyone got a, I guess, you know, I don't, you know, equal access.
Quick question.
Sure.
Uh, was anything filed with the IG's office on any of this?
I don't believe so. I mean, it was all filed by, in the lawsuits, the judge didn't condone, didn't condone, he ruled for Stop &amp; Shop, saying that he didn't feel these ex parte, or he ruled on everything, arose, he didn't condone the behavior, but he didn't say it didn't rise to where he felt that he could overturn the planning board's decision. So I'm just looking for, going forward, that, I mean, I don't know, and again, I'm not speaking certainly for Mr. Sedlecki, he's speaking for himself, just what his feelings is of, of what, how that meeting was, and how he would do it if, if it came up again. I guess that's my, and again, I need to wrap it up.
So I guess, I guess what you're asking him is to just, just explain to us what.
Yeah, kind of how it happened, and.
Well, not even that, but how the processes are gonna be going forward on, on open, and how he would handle something as contentious as.
As it was, because the planning board has these type of decisions.
Yeah, which is just like the sign thing, yes, go ahead. Chet, would you like to?
Well, I haven't, this is something that I just think is, why I'm, have to answer for this when I answered it four or five times already, and Mr. Schuman was there also, so I'm sure that when his appointment comes up, you're gonna ask him the same question, why was he called? And.
Well, I think we know why you were called.
When, when we were called to ask to meet with this guy, we didn't know what he wanted.
Uh-huh.
That, that meeting lasted about two minutes, if that long. He wanted to sit down with us and get an opinion as to a drawing that he had on Stop &amp; Shop. And when he produced that drawing, I got up and said, "We can't do that," and walked out, and Harry will vouch for that, because he walked out right after me. I told this guy, "We can't do that." And when you talk about why Stop &amp; Shop may have, the first time where it was voted against, and then the second time was voted for, it was because of an issue with parking, and the council had to change that ruling to allow the parking. When that was finished, the planning board, not just I, the whole planning board, sat down, looked at it, and we didn't even have to go through weeks and weeks and months like we did before. Almost immediately, Stop &amp; Shop was approved, and that was the end of it. As far as that meeting, that was nothing, it was a nothing meeting.
Okay.
If you want to get enough of the basics here, the reason we met that, that particular day, uh, this Gerald was with a lawyer for Stop &amp; Shop, and he had contacted, this is documented in court, he had contacted Beckley to get our phone numbers, okay? So that's the reason we met, wasn't it, to begin with? I mean, I carried a, a monkey on my back, and I was for about three years, figuring I did something wrong coming down there that day, and all the while, Beckley wanted to set it up. I didn't find out until it was in court.
Okay. David?
Problem, just, I know you.
Two minutes.
Yeah, very quick, just to share two things. I have a little responsibility for that. Frank, because Joe was talking to a lot of people, and he asked me, "Should I talk to the planning board?" And I said, "You should talk to the mayor first, and see what his opinion is." I said, "Discussions, there has been a different era where you would do your fact-finding before you go to a meeting." People don't realize, a lot of planning boards, they're straw vote. I was told twice that I didn't have the votes, not in a public meeting, but one of my, I pulled one of mine. That, that era's changed, open meeting law is looked at totally different now than it was in recent, three or four years ago, but there was direction from the top to the steward on how the planning board should act on that.
I think there, uh, there were some implications there, too, during the course of Stop &amp; Shop, and I'm not gonna go through it because.
No, because we have to get the City Council.
Well, you know, you wanna know something? You invited me here, and I have to talk.
I did, Chet.
If I have to talk for an hour, you will have to listen, because you, this, this one person on this board wants to know what it was. I explained it.
You did, you did.
Is that all I have to do, or do I have to do further?
Yeah, no, no, you explained it, Mr. Schuman explained it, and.
I just asked you, you know, what happened, and assuming that in the future...
And I think this will be the last time it'll come up.
Yeah.